All members are present with the exception of Director Beth Beebe. I would like, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance but we're going to change. This evening I'm going to call upon Sergeant Blystone and Sergeant Harden to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next we have recognition of students, staff, and public, and I'm calling upon Director Jim Sorm for the recognition of veterans and Armed Forces service members.
Thank you, Madam Chair, it is indeed an honor, and for me especially, to stand up here as a Navy veteran, to be able to take this opportunity to welcome all of you and our vets that are here tonight. Especially tonight, we didn't have a chance to do it on November 10th because there was too many exciting things going on on the 11th and the 12th and everything else, so we wanted to have a special night where we could have as many people as possible come. So it's with great proud, we honor our veterans and those who currently serve in the military, and we thank you for your service. To hot add a few things that have taken place in our schools over the years, here are just a few examples. In some of our elementary schools, students gathered information about family and friends who are veterans and displayed that information in the hallway. In the middle schools, one of our counselors at Olson Middle School is in the Army National Guard and has served overseas, and he has worked with students that have family members that have served our country. Incidentally, I'm also a member of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee which works with some of the counselors in the schools and the National Guard in honoring and taking a little bit more responsibility for helping out the families of veterans and that are serving now. And if there's any financial problems or any kind of counseling problems or something like that, we have a committee that's there to help work with them. So one of our middle school teachers' father, a veteran, Vietnam veteran in Desert Storm, has spoken to the eighth grade social studies classes. And some of the social studies sixth and seventh graders work with the VFW every year for the Patriots Pen Essay Contest. They go to a pizza party and a dinner led by the VFW every December and January related to the event, and hear speakers there. Now, in our high schools from time to time, veterans come to speak to the social studies classes. I've tried to do that, since my daughter is a social studies teacher, she doesn't want me appearing in the school, she says I cause too much trouble. I have some neat stories to talk about, but since it's not related to their social studies curriculum. And some of our students even participate in the VFW Voice of Democracy Essay Contest. And as you know, we did have on Friday, November 9th, an opportunity to have a flag raising ceremonies at all of the schools, where the elementary schools would all go out in great numbers and hear all about Veterans Day history, as well as sing a song and then pledge allegiance to the flag. So it's quite an impressive ceremony to see all of the elementary kids. Social studies students at the middle schools and high schools come out in a smaller group. At Hillcrest Community School, a father of one of the students while serving in the Army presented the school with a flag inside the plaque that reads, "Soldiers of the Division Two Hundred and Forty-seventh Helicopter Battalion, U.S. Army Flew This Flag Over Camp Buring in Kuwait on April 2nd, 2015." So we have many activities that go on to honor our veterans and to recognize them. I'd like to invite Melissa Rebel to come up, she's the School and Community Engagement Coordinator at Kennedy High School, to say a few words.
Madam Chair, School Board Representatives, Superintendent Fujitaki, and District Staff, as Jim said, my name is Melissa Rebel, and as the School and Community Engagement Coordinator at Kennedy High School, it is my honor and privilege to publicly thank the Earl C. Hill American Legion and the Everett McClay VFW for your generous support of the Kennedy Community Alliance, which is a program I'm responsible for, and along with your support of various clubs, activities, athletic teams at Kennedy High School. The mission of the Kennedy Community Alliance is to eliminate financial barriers that impact students' academic, extracurricular, and social success that is vital to the overall quality and success of a JFK student experience. The biggest barrier to this is financial vulnerability. Tonight, I've brought along some people from our Kennedy community to share what the impact has been of the donations from the VFW and the American Legion. So let's start with Ms. April Baden, she's a math teacher at Kennedy.
Good evening, like Ms. Melissa Rebel said, my name is April Baden, I teach math at Kennedy High School, and this is my 11th year teaching there. It is with great pleasure that we appreciate your guys' gift to Kennedy High School. It is so beneficial to our students who struggle financially. Last year I had the opportunity to help one of our students specifically in my pre-calculus class, I could tell that she was struggling, something else was on her mind, and I needed to break down her barriers and figure out what it was so I could help her so she could refocus back on her academics to be successful. This was fourth hour, be lunch, got a chance to talk with her, made it through all the tears, and I knew that I needed to speak with Melissa Rebel because she was my connection to our pantry closet. Her father had lost his job, they were struggling with paying some of their bills financially, so I was able to take care of the students, her and her brother, at Kennedy High School with getting them the needs that they needed, toiletry items, food, and so forth, so that way their dad didn't have to worry about those items for them, so they could really stay focused on their academics. So, thank you again for your donation to Kennedy High School.
All right, and next I have Emily Smeltzer, a student at Kennedy High School, senior and student on our track team.
Hello, Ms. Baden was talking about a student that she helped, I am that student. My family hit a rough patch when my dad lost his job, and the pantry helped a lot. It was able to let my dad focus on paying for the house rather than paying for food and other things so that we wouldn't lose our home. But I also wanted to thank them for their donations to the track team, it helps with uniforms and warmups every year, so, thank you.
And then finally, another senior, Trashawn Williams, who is the President and Captain of Rhythm and Gold Kennedy's premier show choir.
Hi, my name is Trashawn Williams, and I attend Kennedy High School, like she stated. I'm also involved in Rhythm and Gold's Kennedy varsity show choir, and I want to start off by saying thank you guys so much for your donations. By you guys donating money, it helps me and other kids at Kennedy get scholarships to pay for the activities that Kennedy offers and to continue participating in them. This year, this past year, my family needed help, just because we were, we hit a vulnerable time in our lives, and with the money you guys donated, it helped us get toiletries, clothes, and also helped at least me pay for show choir, as long as some other students I know. I want to end by saying thank you guys again for so much, and that as President and Dance Captain of Rhythm and Gold, Kennedy is putting on our annual holiday show, and that is December 6th, 7th, and 8th, at 7:00 PM, and it's $10 to get in, so I would love to see you guys all there. Thank you.
First I thought it was three students coming up here, I didn't realize one of them was a teacher, but that's what happens nowadays. Thanks so much for sharing that. And I have to quote Fran Heisman says, "Everybody's got something at their home that they don't need anymore." Wait a minute, Melissa, please, see Melissa, because you can donate whatever you want over to the school and it all helps out, but look around, you all have something in your home that you don't need, so send it over to, I mean, good stuff, not other stuff. But anyhow, thank you for being here tonight. At this time, we're pleased to have with us the veterans that we talked about a little bit and currently serving as members in the military. So, once again, come on back up, Lauren Swenson from the Everett McClay VFW Post 1296, and Commander Rick Warren from the Earl C. Hill American Legion Post. If you want to stand up here, and there's the, your bodyguard, Rick, John Kean.
You look like you can handle the job.
And we also want to recognize two members of the Army National Guard flag raising teams, Staff Sergeant Ralph Blystone and Sergeant First Class Robert Harden. Sergeant Harden is a Bloomington resident, has a student at Washburn Elementary School, and he's also on our Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Executive Committee. And we also want to welcome up here a parent who is currently serving in the Navy, Josh Dobinmeyer, and he has two children at Oak Grove Elementary School. And currently serving in the Army is Chris Terry, who is a student at Oak Grove Elementary School but couldn't make it tonight. So with them all here, I want to just call on Jackson Damagala, he'll have a few words to say from the, as a representative of this, student representative of the school board.
Thank you. We're not only thankful to you, but also motivated by you. You have showed us how to be brave and honest. You will always be in our hearts, without your bravery and compromises, we would never be there to thank you today. Liberty comes at a price, and the men and women who serve our country are willing to pay the price for our freedom and for our peace. Today we thank you, we salute you, we honor you veterans. We thank the two members of the Army National Guard who helped with the flag raising ceremonies at our schools, and the two parents from Oak Grove Elementary School, who are currently active service members. Again, my appreciation for you deep, and my admiration for you is even deeper. Thank you so much for your service, and for everyone's service. Thank you.
So we really appreciate all of the teachers in the social studies classes and the parents and the students for taking time to do special things for the school for Veterans Day. It's always fun to have those types, when you walk in the hallways and see all of the different posters that are up there. So now, I don't know if any of you want to say any words, but we want to thank you once again for it, and do you have a group picture? Did you get a group picture?
Good evening, I just want to thank everyone here for the recognition, and thank you for inviting us here this evening, we appreciate it very much.
I'd like to thank you for this honor, because as a Vietnam veteran who came home during very couple times, it was a struggle at times. The country was in chaos for you that don't know it, there was no respect for nothing, so it's nice after 9/11 to see people finally recognize the flag and recognize the veterans that helped put it there, and these students, I love to see them involved, I really do, because you know, this is our future, and we have to support them, we have to make sure that they get the things that they need, so unfortunately, they didn't get treated like we did. It's just the cold hard fact. And then I was surprised when I, after 9/11, my daughter's a schoolteacher, and she told me that they had no flags in their classrooms to pledge of allegiance. I have to say, I was shocked. Why is this happening? So, from that point on, as veterans, we made a promise to make sure every classroom in this city has a flag, so, thank you.
Hi, Sergeant Ralph Blystone, I'm with here in Bloomington at the First Brigade Combat Team here. We like to thank you for allowing us into your schools to help raise the flags, to show your students, you know, some of the things of patriotism that it is. This is my third year of doing it, I've been pretty happy doing it, it's usually not a problem finding people for this. Nice thing this year is on a workday, so I was able to grab people from their office, and we have to go outside for a little bit, so I do thank you for all what you've guys done for us, and we're proud. Thank you.
Chief Petty Officer Dobinmeyer, I also wanted to echo some of the same sentiments. Coming into the Navy shortly after 9/11, you know, we saw kind of some of the same things, there wasn't a whole lot of, I'm originally from Detroit, in the Detroit area there wasn't a whole lot of support for the military. I can't even remember ever seeing an American flag in any of the schools except way back, way back, when I was in elementary school. And it's really nice to see the shift over the years, but moving here, I've been a Bloomington resident for five, six years now, this was my fourth year participating in the flag raising ceremonies that they did at Oak Grove, and I know they do them at the other schools as well, and it's really, really nice and heartwarming to see the support that we've seen from the community here, so I appreciate that, and I know my fellow brothers and sisters appreciate that, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Once again, thank you very much for being here with us to share this significant night. You may return to your, you may return to your seats.
Okay, we're going to move on to the Human Rights Day proclamation, would someone like to read that motion?
Madam Chair, we resolve the School Board of Independent Schools District 271 approves the proclamation recognizing December 10th, 2018, as Human Rights Day in the Bloomington Public Schools.
Second. All right, I'm going to read the proclamation. Whereas the Bloomington Public Schools join our nation in recognizing December 10th, 2018, as International Human Rights Day, and whereas Bloomington recognizes the importance of acknowledging the diversity that exists in our community as we strive for autonomous participation in our community affairs, and whereas the devastating impact of prejudice can be eliminated through the efforts of our schools and city in promoting human rights awareness, and whereas the Universal Declaration of Human Rights asserts all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, and whereas the designation of a special Human Rights Day serves to remind us that basic human rights must be made available to all people, and whereas the City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission is celebrating 50 years of aiding and advising the city council in assuring all citizens have equal opportunities, therefore be it resolved that Bloomington Board of Education Independent School District Number 271, Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim December 10th, 2018, as Human Rights Day, and ask all residents to continue their efforts in making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights for all persons. All right, so now we're going to vote on the proclamation, so all in favor of this, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, and then I'm going to call on Angela Kunkel, she is the Bloomington Humans Rights Youth Commissioner, if she'll join me at the podium.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening Superintendent Fujitaki, Chair, Stagoff, and School Board. My name is Angela Kunkel, I'm a senior at Jefferson High School and a member of the Human Rights Commission. Human Rights Day is a time for people to reflect about the meaning, importance, and the need for human rights. December 10th, 1948, was the date chosen to honor the United Nations General Assembly's adoption and proclamation of the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. The Universal Declaration of Human Rights arose directly from the experience of the Second World War, represents the first global expression of rights to which all human beings are inherently entitled. The City of Bloomington Human Rights Commission annually observes December 10th as the anniversary of this presentation, and invites its residents to continue to work toward making Bloomington a model for fair and equal rights for all persons. In addition, I would like to invite the School Board members to the December 3rd City Council Meeting for the presentation of the Omar Bondroot Award to Dennis Kane. The reception will be from 6:00 to 7:00 PM, with the presentation following at the City Council Meeting at 7:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our friend, Youth Frontiers. The school district is fortunate to have businesses, organizations, faith communities, and individuals who partner with us to provide educational opportunities and support our learners in the Bloomington community. In appreciation of these collaborative efforts, the Bloomington School Board recognizes our friends of education. So tonight I'm going to invite Carol Camper, Principal of Kennedy High School, to introduce our friend for this evening, Youth Frontiers.
Madam Chair, School Board Representatives, Superintendent Fujitaki, and District Staff, I'm here tonight to welcome the Youth Frontiers to our friends of Bloomington. If I could be joined up here by Todd Moss and Sherry Keepers from Youth Frontiers, please. Over 30 years ago, Joe Kavanaugh and Youth Frontiers reached out to the Bloomington School District to offer an opportunity to partner with them to provide opportunity for retreats for students. These retreats focused on building school communities where students feel safe, respected, and have a sense of belonging. Youth Frontier worked closely with MDE and is research-based, embedded on the Search Institute's four developmental assets. The Youth Frontier Retreats are truly an invaluable experience for Kennedy and Bloomington students, and they have had a long-term lasting impact on creating a positive and successful school experience for all students. On behalf of the Bloomington School District, I want to thank the Youth Frontiers and congratulate them on being a friend of the Bloomington School District.
Thank you. I want to say thank you on behalf of Youth Frontiers, both Sherry and I are honored to be here, it's also a privilege, an honor, because we get to work with many of the schools here in Bloomington. Even just a week and a half ago, I was with Olson Elementary School, working with their fourth graders on Kindness Retreat. It's an honor to walk in there and see teachers who know me, I've been around Youth Frontiers for 14 years, and this is a little bit of a melting of my world as a lifelong resident of Bloomington, grew up walking these hallways, I was just over at Oak Grove Elementary growing up, went to Kennedy High School as a graduate, go Eagles. My worlds sort of collide here, my daughters both have had the opportunity to be on these retreats, so I've been able to see what the impact of these retreats do, but also somebody gets to work with Youth Frontiers, it's quite an honor, because what we focus on is character. There's a lot of great organizations that are helping kids find their needs in many different ways, but we are one of those organizations that walks alongside, partners with schools, and focus on character, because who we are matters, but what we do matters as well, and so it is with great privilege and honor that we receive this tonight. So thank you for the intentional work that you are doing in the schools to make sure kids know that they matter, and what they do matters as well, so thank you.
Hey Carol, you get to stay up there. We have the Kennedy High School National Merit Semi-finalists and Committed Students, so once again, Carol, if you want to do the introductions.
I will. Max, would you join me, please? I'm here tonight to recognize Max Malinger as a National Merit Scholar Semi-finalist. This means that Max placed among the highest-scoring students out of 1.6 million who took the PSAT exam. Max will now move on to potentially earn the National Scholar Award and Scholarship. In addition to being a National Merit Scholar, Max also earned the AP Scholar with Distinction Honor. This distinction means that Max received an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and a score of three or higher on five or more exams. Max is a member of our Science Olympiad and participated in Dimensions Academy. Please help me in congratulating Max, Kennedy High School's very proud of you.
I just want to thank my mom for pushing me academically all these years, because without that, this wouldn't really be possible, so, yeah, thank you.
I'm also here to recognize Skylar Bolden. Skylar couldn't be with us this evening, but Skylar is being recognized tonight as a National Merit Commended Scholar. This means that Skylar placed among the top 50,000 students out of more than 1.6 million who took the PSAT. In addition to this achievement, Skylar also was an AP Scholar with Distinction, meaning that Skylar received an average score of 3.5 on all AP exams taken, and a score of three or higher on five or more exams. Skylar is a full-time PSEO student, we are very proud of Skylar.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the Board Student Representative Reports, do you guys know which one's going first?
I got this.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ally Starks, I'm Kennedy's representative, and so I'll just get right into it. So in November, we had our Golden Torch Breakfast for Trimester One, which is where 30 students, two from each department are chosen and honored for their achievements in that department, and so they get their little breakfast, and they get their picture hung up in one of our hallways. Our career in College Center had six college visits in November, and three of which were community or technical colleges, which again, were working on erasing the university-for-all mindset and opening students' eyes to post-high school opportunities that match their interests. Kofi Beckley was selected to the Minnesota Football Coaches Association All-Star Game, playing for the South team on December 15th at the US Bank Stadium. Four of our Kennedy athletes were recognized at our signing event for their commitment to college teams. We had Ben Cradle, he's going to play baseball at Dakota County Technical College, Tori Miller will play soccer at Concordia St. Paul University, Destiny Olberg will play basketball at University of Arkansas. Destiny Olberg will play basketball at University of Arkansas, and Emily Smeltzer, who talked earlier about the veterans, will do track and field at Hamlin University. And she was also named a Wendy's High School Heisman winner and will receive a $500 scholarship. And to qualify, students would have a GPA of 3.0 or above, participate in at least one sport, and be a leader in their schools and communities, which she applies to all of those with flying colors. So congratulations to all of our athletes for this really big month for them. And looking forward, the end of the try with finals on Wednesday and Thursday are coming up with early releases on those days. Thank you, School Board members. And also thanks to all the teachers and staff for their hard work this trimester.
Hello, I'm Jackson Damagala. I'm a senior at Jefferson High School. I first want to apologize for my mustache. It's day 26 of No Shade November, and I want to apologize to my mother for having this on TV. Jefferson, it's the last week of the trimester, meaning one thing, finals. This week Jefferson will again use the half-day schedule for Wednesday and Thursday. I prefer that more, just because when we didn't have that, I usually would run late coming for lunch, so that's way, way better to have a half-day and then go study, I guess. Jefferson Theater Company will present The Lion, The Witch, and The Roadrope at 7:00 PM, December 6th through 8th, and at 3:00 PM is December 8th in Jefferson's High School Auditorium. Two weeks ago at Jefferson, we had a cancer awareness week. This included wearing certain colors on a day during the week to promote awareness for different cancers. JAG Corps, who ran the awareness, also had T-shirts that were being sold for $10 during lunch. What I've heard is that we've raised over $1,000 during that week, which is very impressive and always for a good cause. During this Thanksgiving break, the Jefferson Marching Band went on a trip to Hollywood. They performed at the Hollywood Christmas Parade. Also, the Jefferson Jets adapted soccer team made an impressive run in the state tournament. Congrats to them, and I wish the best of luck next season. With all fall sports done, the winter sports have begun. The basketball team will have a blue-and-white scrimmage on Friday after the first week of practice, and the girls' hockey team won last night 2-1. That concludes my report, and I wish the best of luck to the rest of students for a good finals and hopefully a strong finish to the trimester. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't believe we have any students here for government class this evening. I don't see any, so is there anyone else who wishes to address the School Board on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I see no one, so let's move on to Part A. Is there a motion to approve Part A?
Some vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
And all in favor of approving Part A, please say aye.
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 Okay, moving on to Part B. This is going to be fees this evening, and I think we have Dr. Eric Melby coming up for that. Would someone like to read the first one here, I guess?
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the graduation fee of $60 per student for Kennedy and Jefferson High Schools for the 2018-19 school year.
Board Chair Stagoff, other members of the Board, Superintendent Fujitaki, here to go through fees with you tonight. I would just like to go on record and tell student rep Damagala, I like the mustache. It's been more than 28 days, yeah. With graduation fees, I've consulted with the high school administration, looked at how our finances have been moving forward over the years with graduation, and at this point, not recommending a fee increase for graduation remain. Keep the fee at $60. Would also like to point out that if students or families need support with that $60 fee, the buildings work individually with them and make sure that that's not an issue to graduate from high school.
Mr. Bennett.
Do you know how long it's been since the last time these fees were raised?
The graduation fee, for some of the other ones, I do have a date. Director Bennett of 2013 is the last time for the graduation fee. I don't have an exact date for that. It's been 60 for a number of years.
Yeah, since I've been here, as far as I know. Okay, just curious.
Any other questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, moving on, would someone like to read the next one?
Madam Chair.
Good.
Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the student parking fees for Kennedy High School and Jefferson High School at 270 per year, at $90 per trimester for the 2019-2020 school year.
This is another fee with not, with no increase recommended going forward. Some of the things that make that recommendation the way it is, is that because the students pay this fee, there's elasticity of demand. If we increase prices, participation likely decreases. Kind of a zero-sum game when it comes to increasing prices. We have a number of students who are taking PSEO or college and career classes, driving back and forth, needing to use the parking lot. We don't want to have a fee make anybody think they can't take part in those programs. The fees do help defray costs for parking lot attendance and maintenance. And again, like the graduation fee, we would work with students and families if there are financial issues and make sure that that's not a barrier to using the parking lots.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, the next one, please.
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School of Independent School District 271 approves student instrument user fees for the 2019-20 school year.
This is another, no increase to instrument user fees for next year. And again, I would point out that if any families need assistance, we would make sure that that's not a barrier to participating in using our instruments.
Question?
And it's also probably worth pointing out that elementary students don't pay any fees for their instruments. For fifth-grade band and orchestra.
Fifth-grade band, correct.
No question.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, would someone like to read the next one?
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the student athletic fees for the 2019-2020 school year.
Okay, this is one where we are recommending a increase. We have not raised fees for athletics since 2013. Costs have been going up over that time. Inflationary costs, officials' fees, transportation. So the recommendation is at the high schools, a $10 increase per sport, at the middle schools, $5 increase per sport, adaptive fees, $5 per sport, strength and conditioning, $5. We do have student and family maximums, $20 increase for student-family maximums, which would mean a student maximum would go from 430 a year to 450 a year, and total family maximum 730 to 750 for next school year. Again, we have supports. We would never let the fees be a barrier to anybody taking part in any of these things. The high schools have the information to request assistance on their website. If anybody in the public is watching and has questions about that, they're certainly welcome to contact the athletic directors or activity directors for either high school, Chad Nyberg at Jefferson, John Anderson at Kennedy High School, or John Bourne in the middle schools. And if those names flew past, contact any administrator in any building, and they'll help direct you in the right direction to get support with fees.
Thank you. Question? Okay, all in favor? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I was asking, yeah, in regards to the scholarship program to help kids that need financial support, is there any limitation to that fund? Or is it kind of like, once that scholarship money's gone, then there's nothing for the rest of the kids?
No, it's really built into the budget, so the athletic or the activities directors, I should say that correctly, manage that and work directly with those, with those families and with the coaches at the buildings. So there's no, there's no cap or there's no limit or anything like that.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And I think for all of us, I don't think, you know, none of us really want to see these fees go up, but you know, I think at the same time, we're also seeing a large amount of inflation, so it's probably better to do the $5, $10 increments instead of waiting another couple of years down the road and then we have to raise them by $30, $40. So it's probably, it's better to do it this way than wait until, we have to put a large increase, so.
Madam Chair, Eric, this is for the whole year, so some of these events, they have a couple of events. One Act Plays or different events that covers them for the whole year. I mean, as opposed to per event or per activity season.
Yeah, for season, and the next group of fees will be activities fees and, and yeah, to answer your question, yes, for the next round of fee recommendations as well.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, the next one, would someone like to read the activity fees?
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the student activity fees for the 2019-2020 school year.
So this is, as I just alluded to, another recommendation for an increase. They haven't been increased, much like athletics, since 2013, and expenditures have been increasing over that time. It would be a $5 increase per activity, except for jazz band and a $20 student and family maximum increase in activity fees.
We noticed that we've had, for athletic events, an adult year-long pass, and that's proved fairly successful at the high schools, hasn't it?
I believe so.
The purchasing of that, but there, for every other activity or event, I mean, that's a fee for the band concert at one school, another one, and then the theater, theatrical productions, and then the musicals, those are all, there are no annual activity fees. Like, I'll give you 100 bucks, so can I go to everything and not be tardy?
Right.
I mean, that's just hypothetical. I'm not going to say that.
Yep. You just did.
It's on TV. Okay, thank you.
Can we vote on this one? This is the, the, just to clarify, this is the student activity fees?
Correct.
Okay, so, any other questions on that? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, and one more, would someone like to read the student adult admission fees?
Madam Chair. Be it resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves student adult admission fees for activities for the 2019-2020 school year.
And this one, as Director Sorem alluded to, is for fees for admission to athletics and activities, and the recommendation is to keep those fees the same for next year.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, that brings us to Board Member, thank you, Mr. Melby. That brings us to Board Member Reports. Who's going first tonight?
Madam Chair.
Everybody looks over there.
I'll get these out of the way. Had the opportunity to attend the Bloomington Housing Coalition presentation on housing and homelessness. It was over at Oak Grove Presbyterian Church. There were four presenters, we had representation from the district. It was just a really interesting conversation to hear the opportunities that still exist right here within Bloomington for affordable housing, the barriers that stand in front of homeless students and parents. Nelly was there in the audience, and I'm sure, I don't know if you're going to share tonight or not, but I thought it was very, very interesting, very, very moving, so it was nice to see that so many people from the community were there taking notes and signing up for different, different components of follow-up groups. So, interesting conversation. Also had the opportunity to attend the spaghetti dinner over at Kennedy for their show choirs. Great food, silent auction. I know I put my name down on a few of them, but I was outbid by probably a lot of money because I'm pretty cheap, but that's okay. But it was also great, great music. The way they do that particular presentation is you're in the cafeteria, the lunchroom, and half of it is closed off for a stage, and then the presentations sort of cycle through there, and you get to see different flavors depending on what time of the evening you go. I think it started at 5:30, it was over to 8:00, and so you had different choirs coming in and singing and doing their presentations. Maureen, Nelly, myself, had the opportunity to attend the MSBA Pre-Delegate Assembly meeting. This was over at, in St. Paul. This year, I think there was 22, either 21 or 22 resolutions that MSBA had received from the 336 different school districts across the state. They're advocating for anything and everything. Some of the, some of the resolutions are local, to the local school districts, and some of them are statewide. They could have an impact on, on all the districts, and some of them are pretty unique to their particular districts, but we will be going and voting on that this Saturday, which is December 1st. So I asked Nelly, who's the chair of our Legislative Committee, if it was all right, if I shared the presentations with the superintendent, and she had agreed, so I dropped him off at Lester's office. He's got a little light reading to do from between now and tomorrow at 5:00. But it's, it's really an interesting process to watch the delegate assembly and see how it works. It, it reminds me, not that my mind ever needs a reminder, that so many different school districts, so many different school board members can be so passionate about advocating for their district and for the state as a whole. So if you had a chance to watch it, it would be really, really interesting to see, but it's, it's an honor to be a part of that, and as I mentioned, Maureen and Nelly and I are delegates from Bloomington. And I'll, I'll end my report right there.
Next, to kind of, you know, continue that, what Director Brinkstrom started. So, yeah, with the, about the pre-delegate assembly, you know, like he said, it's a very interesting process, and also a reminder that we as a school district could maybe bring resolutions next year if there's a specific topic that we feel passionate about, and if we want to maybe bring one, we can, we can do it and bring it to MSBA for consideration. So, just something to keep in mind. Yeah, most of the resolutions that we have this year seem to be about special education, so it'll be interesting to see what comes out of that after approval on Saturday during the delegate assembly. I also attended the Bloomington Housing Coalition, and, you know, once again, very concerning the crisis, the issue that we have of housing in Bloomington, and especially to see the numbers of our homeless students that keep, keep growing. If you remind me, I think the last number was 160 students, 100, yeah, about that number that we have, is that right? Yeah, 160 students that are homeless in, in our district, Bloomington school students. I would like to highlight the presentation given by Julie Campanelli. I think she did a great job, and, you know, just in general, the wonderful job that she's doing by helping our students who are in big need right now. You know, the stories that we heard, it was, it was moving, it is, you know, it's, it's hard to walk out of there without feeling touched and sad and concerned at the same time, but also hopeful for the many people who are very interested in this, in this topic, who are really working and trying to, you know, to kind of change and go against those different barriers that are present right now around this topic. What else? I'll be attending the, this coming Wednesday, I'll be attending the AMSD Annual Conference, and so the name of that one conference is Ensuring Equity, Access, and Opportunity for All Students. I don't know if anybody else from the Board will be attending. I think, yeah, I told you about that one during our last, last meeting, but if anybody's interested, I think you might still be able to register, probably tomorrow, you need a ticket, you need to register. I believe it's $30 per, per Board Member. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything? Mr. Sum.
Just mentioning that I had, other than the cold-weather flag-raising ceremonies that we had around the different, it was really impressive, I alluded to a little bit ago, by having every elementary school had all of the students come out and gather around the flagpole, and they, and they sang a song. And they sang a song, and then they pledged allegiance, and it was very orderly and impressive. I got to be the doorman because I was one of the adults to hold open the doors for 400 and some odd kids as they came out all the time, so it was really kind of chilly. But it's always been a good annual event that we have, and it's good to see the response that we get from the community, too, because every once in a while, there's parents, grandparents, and other adults that attend the flag raising. Also attended the Community Education Advisory Committee, and they meet a couple, four times a year quarterly. And Jenna Smith was there from the city, and it's always good when we have the community education in our programs that we go over, and then we have the city talk about some of the programs. The joint effort that Bloomington has, Bloomington Schools and Bloomington City, especially during the summer, but otherwise, with all of the facilities that we have, how coordinated and well-organized it is and working so well together, that it's just been a good transition from when we were with Richfield also, but now it's just all Bloomington, and it's working out well. So that's just a positive aspect that we have for that. Yeah, that's about it.
Anyone else? Mr. Bennett?
Yes, a few weeks ago, I was able to join the fifth graders at Normandale Hills Elementary for a couple days in a field trip up north at Camp Autobahn, which was a wonderful experience for our kids. It's all hands-on, experiential learning, where kids are learning about beavers and then building beaver lodges, and then learning about wolves, and then actually got to do some radio tracking of wolves, where one group would take their little transmitter and go hide, and the other group would go have to hunt them down and find them. So just a great opportunity that these fifth graders get to experience, and I think Normandale Hills and Poplar Bridge are the only two elementary schools that are still doing it. And I think they, really, hopefully they can continue doing it because it's a great experience. And I've been to several camps, and I'd have to say Camp Autobahn, they got, have to have the best food of any camp we've been to. I don't know, were you able to go there when your kids were?
I've been there twice.
So you know what I'm talking about. The food was great there. And then, so it was a lot of fun. Hopefully I'll get to go next year as well. And also, before this meeting, we had our BSAC meeting with the high schoolers, which is always a lot of fun. These guys working on their vision and their goals of unifying Bloomington and doing a one Bloomington theme, and just watching how they navigate different aspects of that and trying to fulfill their goals, which is a lot of fun for Nellie and I to be part of. And that's all I got to say about that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right. I also attended the spaghetti dinner, and, you know, the place was packed, so I just want to say thank you to the community for coming out once again and supporting our students. And I have to say, though, the highlight for me was actually watching a little one by me, standing up by her chair, singing along with the big kids. And I thought, oh, yep, she'll be trying out, not very long, won't she? And so then I attended the CCAC, which is the Special Ed Advisory for people that don't know. And the presentation there was, Robin Bloom did a, came and presented on some of the changes that we're doing in the transition program. And I'll tell you, the parents that were there were very impressed and very happy with the things that are happening. So it seemed like it was very well-received. And I have to tell you, I was almost wishing I could roll back time and resend my guy back through there after listening to all the things they were doing. So it was great. And the only other thing is, I believe the calendar committee is meeting Wednesday this week, so look for future information on that. Maybe we'll actually have one to bring soon. All right, that's it. To pretend it.
Thank you. First, administration requests a motion to cancel the scheduled December 24th board meeting.
So moved.
I thought we were going to be here.
What else am I going to do?
Is there a second? He said so moved. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
I seconded it before he finished.
Okay, all right. So all in favor of, what did you call it?
Cancel.
Canceling. All in favor of canceling the scheduled board meeting for December 24th, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right.
Next is, the city manager has invited us to work with him and the city, so we have been on programming for a possible new community center. We'll keep informed of developments of that work. Next is, today I met with Rich Wagner, the president of Dunwoody College, to explore collaboration possibilities. Finally, we're preparing for the upcoming legislative session and working with a new governor. So we'll keep you informed of that prep work. That concludes my report. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Maybe an adjourn.
Ryan, you stayed for the whole meeting?